John's chair. I hear what you're talking, it's like a squeak or something.
Are you squeaking?
Cause I kept looking and going, what on earth? Who's microphone? What is that?
Yeah.
It's John's chair.
No. Uh.
Adam.
Yeah. Oh, it's just. I'm not sure if there was a, there was a.
It's just an issue.
Um. I don't know. Yeah. It's just a problem. Uh. Okay.
There's one problem for us.
Okay.
I have six o'clock. Call order council meeting for June twenty eighth. If everyone would stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Remain standing for prayer.
Dear Lord, blessed decisions of this body, guide us tonight and the future as well. Amen.
Can we have real call?
Mister Grove.
Here.
Mister Cornell.
Present.
Mister Lau.
Here.
Mister McNeese.
Here.
Mister Salters.
Here.
Mister Ravellette.
Here.
Mister Stangle.
Here.
Mayor Yocum.
Here.
Adoption of the agenda.
Uh, on the agenda, I'm gonna bump the quality of life discussion to D and then just bump everything else up. So then we can get those other things taken care of before we go to that. But other than that.
Second.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to adopt the agenda. I kind of froze there for a second. Thank you.
With the changes?
Yeah, with the changes.
I'll second that.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to adopt the agenda with the change.
Question.
Mister Stangle.
Yes.
Mister Ravellette.
Yes.
Mister McNeese.
Yes.
Mister Lau.
Yes.
Mister Salters.
Yes.
Mister Cornell.
Yes.
Mister Grove.
Yes.
And by vote of seven to zero, the agenda is adopted. Need approval of the minutes?
Make a motion to approve last meeting's minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Question.
Mister Lau.
Yes.
Mister Cornell.
Yes.
Mister Grove.
Yes.
Mister McNeese.
Yes.
Mister Ravellette.
Yes.
Mister Salters.
Yes.
Mister Stangle.
Yes. And by vote of seven to zero, they are approved. Petitions, memorials, remonstrances. I will just mention that former captain, Azzie Cox, former firefighter, has passed away. So our thoughts and prayers are with his family. Committee, committee chair reports.
Okay, got a couple of things to hit on our committee chair reports. Um, uh, here shortly or soon, um, the housing study will be coming out. So you'll be able to take a look at that. Uh, the mayor and I have been lucky enough to be in on those. And I want to thank Chris, uh, and the KCDC for putting the work in for this because, uh, when you guys get to see the, uh, outcome of this, it's going to be extremely beneficial for not just the city of Vincent, but Knox County as a whole. Um, it gives us the backing that we need instead of us just saying, hey, we need housing. Now we can back it up and specifically say, here's specific price points. Here's what we're looking for. Here's what you can do to make money, uh, which is gonna benefit everybody. So we're extremely excited about that. We gotta sit and look through that. So thanks, Chris. Um, and I know the mayor's excited as well. So kind of keep you updated on that. Uh, solid waste. Um, there's some bids going back and forth with the building that we've discussed. Um, we're gonna try to, um, do some different things there. Um, we'll come back to you with information. Uh, but that's kind of up in the air with the building. We know we've talked about it a couple of months ago. So just wanted to kind of keep you in the loop there. Um, so right now they're currently kind of, I guess, haggling some prices. Um, but it could happen. It could not happen. So we'll keep you updated there. Um, so that's what we have for solid waste. And then I think our walkable cities meetings have been extremely, uh, have gone extremely well. And I want to thank the mayor came last time and we had a huge crowd. It was fantastic. Um, these meetings were kind of taking, taking a shape. You kind of get a theme. One of the bigger themes that we saw this time was really a key push for safety. Um, and safety being helping people slow down in certain areas, um, and make sure people notice really heavily populated areas. Specifically think like parks or residential neighborhood areas. So we kind of talk, talked about some certain things. I'll set up a meeting with our chief. See what he thinks would work best for us, um, in setting those things up. And then another discussion became, uh, we really hit sidewalks there for a while. So, um, how would we go about kind of rating our sidewalk similar to how we would rate our roads, which makes it easier for us than to identify what needs to be worked on?
Well, and I, uh, can I chime in on this a little bit too?
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, we came up with the idea, I think a light bulb went off is we have a very good road inventory and the, and the process to pave roads in our town. Although it may not seem like, they may seem random, it is because those roads are graded. And then, uh, the worst ones are then fixed based on that and maybe travel, how much is over there? Well, we don't have an inventory or a grading system for our sidewalks. And moving forward, I think that that's something that if we can figure out how to pay to do that or have that done, it could bring about changes even in the fifty fifty program. If, uh, as, as we talk about that, say it's graded F, you know, maybe that's not a fifty fifty. Maybe that's a seventy thirty. Maybe you change that based on, uh, ensuring that the worst sidewalks in your community get fixed first. And, uh, I think that that came out of that, um, meeting the other night, which really had twenty people that, all citizens. And it's, I mean, happened in here, our employees. Um, it is amazing to get that many people out to a meeting. Uh, there is certainly interest. Uh, voters, uh, want those things and our residents want those things. So, uh, we have to really pay attention. So anything else there?
No, and we'll have our next one July twenty second.
So.
And it was the weirdest thing to have a, a group of people at the end like, well, what's our homework for, at the end? The key thing is, is just make sure you pay attention to certain areas. What's our worst spots? What, what spots work and those kind of things like that.
So the actionable item there would be creating an inventory at some point in time. How does, what's that process?
I would say I would work with the city engineer and see what we can.
Yeah, and it's nice that we've got a city engineer on staff that is gonna be able to do that. And the thing is too, it's not about remaking the wheel. We've got kind of a template that's worked very well for our roads. Now, how are we gonna be able to use that specifically for sidewalks? And that's what we've gotta work on and move forward with. But I think we've got a really good idea to start off with.
Also, I think it gives the mayor and the administration here some, some real things in the background when somebody calls in and says, I want my sidewalk fixed, just like we do with the streets. They can go, well, it's graded here. We're gonna be doing this next and this next and this next. It's, it's a good program to follow and emulate it on the streets.
But anytime they call for fifty fifty, we will gladly.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I will gladly work with.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, so those are the three meetings that I had updates to.
Uh, I, quick RDC date, where's Mister Olligan?
He's back there.
Hi, I'm Heather. Uh, the most significant thing, I think that there was a lot of things came out of the RDC, but one of the things of interest to us is Gimble Corner. We signed off on it. It is now, is it now in the possession of another person?
Not yet.
Not yet, but we're close?
We're close.
So the RDC signed off on moving the Gimble Corner lot to, uh, what is it? Richter?
REM.
REM. Uh, yeah, losing my religion. REM, um, development. Uh, so it's in that process, but we signed off on it. So it's moving forward on that. So that's good news.
The UVA met, uh, June seventeenth, um, after our last, uh, city council meeting. And, uh, we had three businesses to approach us for, uh, some help. And the three businesses total, we gave, uh, a total of seventy thousand five hundred dollars, or we promised seventy thousand five hundred dollars to these businesses. Also two homeowners came, uh, approached us for help on fixing their roofs. And, um, total there was five thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. And, um, that was pretty much it.
Do have a, uh, parks, public spaces. We, uh, had a meeting and, uh, had some good things come out of that meeting, a few things to do. Um, you know, that, what we're really looking at is, uh, how do we make those, those spaces even more usable? Um, better looking, things like that. Um, one of those things that we, we discussed was, uh, maybe the avail, the availability of, uh, using some of the existing buildings that are, are, uh, out there, some of the brick buildings for public murals. Uh, historical murals that would be, uh, placed in the parks. Um, with that, kind of ran with that. And, uh, uh, even did a little research there to see if there would be an interested artist. And, uh, uh, looking at maybe doing a, uh, coming up, uh, this season, a historical mural in Greg Park, uh, representing that park and, uh, some, some history behind that park and getting with that, using local artists. Um, in fact, I reached out to, um, Barbara Stoll, who is a, an artist that is out of Indy right now, but graduated Lincoln in, I believe, seventy-six. And, uh, she had a couple of thoughts and ideas that, that led me then to call, uh, Mister Latta and, uh, reach out to some other people. In fact, I'll be reaching out to Norbert Brown about some, uh, additional, um, uh, photographs and things like that. And pulling up so that we can do some, some fun murals, uh, historical murals in our parks to help, uh, connect our parks, our art ways, and things like that all together. So as we, as we look at a walkable city and things like that, we are connecting all of those things together. So that as you get to another place, you can look at something and say, hey, there's a piece of art. You can, you can do that. You can go to a mural. You can, you can do something in the public for entertainment. So all, all part of what we're looking at, uh, as well in the par, Parks and Public Spaces Committee.
Anyone else? No. Report of city officers. Chief Hillenbrand.
Council members, Chief John Hillenbrand. Really sounds, just not used to that just yet. Every time someone says chief, I keep looking for Chief Dunham. So, uh, I'm trying to get used to that. Uh, I just have to report that unfortunately, Assistant Chief Terry Johnson has turned in a letter of resignation. Um, he is of the retirement age and he has decided that he is going to move forward, uh, and work on some other retirement, uh, options for him that will better his family down the road. And you can't blame him for that. Also unfortunately, we're also losing Sergeant John McKinnon, who is also, uh, gonna retire and, and move on for those same reasons. So with those two departing, we are losing over fifty years of service to this city. Uh, both officers have done a magnificent job. So unfortunately, I have to let you be aware of that. And that's all I have. John, I noticed in your report here, how many, how many officers are we down right now? And how does the pipeline look for new officers? Uh, to be completely honest with you, with the retirement of those two officers, it will take us up to six. We're a department of thirty-eight. Uh, we have two currently in the hiring process, uh, that just took their polygraph and we're waiting on those results. And then we have two more in the background. And as long as they pass the background phase, then they will go on to the polygraph, uh, stage. And that will end the current hiring list. So I believe we started around eighteen and we're down to four. And we're hoping that these four are able to make it. And the merit board is already, uh, accepting applications so that we can start another hiring process immediately. So, um.
Chief, just so people know, how long does the typical hiring process start? Because, I mean, I mean, how long is that?
Start to finish.
Start to finish.
Start to finish. In just the hiring process is about a six-month process at its fastest. Uh, from the time that, uh, we take the applications until, uh, they're able to be hired is six months. Then you have probably another eight months worth of training before they're ever out on their own and able to answer their first call by themselves. So it's a, uh, it's a lengthy process from start to finish.
That's what I was gonna mention. It's gonna take a while before they get out on their own. They're gonna have to ride with someone.
Hopefully. Counsel Stangle knows it, uh, better than, yeah, almost anybody. Yes, it, it is a very lengthy process. So.
Hopefully we'll get some lateral transfers.
Yes, that's always something that we look forward to trying to pull other officers away from other departments and bring them here. Because then that expedites the training because they're already trained. They've already been to the academy. They've been on the road. They come with all of this experience. And, um, unfortunately in years past, we have had officers stolen from our department and taken to other departments. So we would certainly like to, uh.
Return the favor.
Yeah, return the favor. Yeah, that's a great way to put it. That's right. So, yes.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a positive thing for them. So we're happy for, for Terry and John. So, thank you.
Appreciate your service and congratulate them. Thanks, Chief. Other comment? Then we'll move on to old business. First up is business updates.
Alright, so we're in a really good spot. We've had a lot of big events, a lot of things coming through town. So that puts our businesses in a great spot again. And then obviously we've got the big Fourth of July weekend coming up. It's, I, people are excited that it's back. It's back where it should be, uh, right on the banks of the Wall Bash for us. So, um, I would expect another good business update when we come back. Obviously the key thing is, is, um, staffing. There's opportunities out there. So I've always encouraged and, you know, obviously I spend a lot of time with a lot of high school students. So, you know, try to say, hey, there's opportunities out there. Be able to do it. So we've got to be the biggest cheerleaders for our business. And we've done that since then. I know that we'll still continue to do that. But when it comes to business in the city of Vincent, things are going extremely well. And I expect that to continue with all the big events that we have planned throughout the summer.
Okay, move to county metrics update.
Uh, our COVID numbers are absolutely great. I know we've gone from a zero to a point five, but it was going to hap, as low as we were, it was going to happen. Uh, one of the key things to know is we were sitting around those single digits in cases per a hundred thousand. Once you go over ten, then that bumps us up in a category. So that's why we were at a point five. We also saw kind of an increase of close to twenty cases over last week. And you're probably asking yourself, well, I saw a lot of zeros and ones. The reason was is the state added a lot of historical cases throughout the state. Obviously we were one of the areas that they added historical cases. So that's why you saw a jump there. Other than that though, our numbers are still at the bottom. Our total positivity today was one point one percent. Our unique positivity was one point nine percent. Uh, we had a zero yesterday, a zero today. I mean, we're really at a good spot. I mean, we're solid blue. The whole state besides five counties are blue. So when you look at the trend that not only we are in, but the state of Indiana, we're in a fantastic spot moving forward. So, um, hats off to everybody that's doing a great job here in Vincent, Southwest Indiana, and obviously Indiana as a whole, but things are going great.
Right. And continue to encourage everyone to get the vaccine if you haven't. Okay, new business. Uh, Kirk Bushy, USB yearly update. You should have a packet in front of you.
Mayor Yocum, President Salters, City Councilman, City Attorney Olligan, Clerk Treasure Lane, citizens. Thank you for the opportunity to once again come before you and, uh, give you just a, a brief overview of, of what's happened within the utilities over the last year, uh, and, and kind of where we stand on, on current projects and so forth. Uh, before I get started, I'd like to, uh, point out and, uh, introduce our board chairman, the USB Board Chairman Ryan Clark is here. Uh, Gary Hackney, a relatively new member of the USB this year is here, as well as one of our employees, Jake Personette, who is our MS four coordinator is here. I think, I didn't see anybody else. Okay. Um, anytime I'm asked to talk about, uh, our, uh, utilities, I start with our people. Cause that's really what makes our utilities run as smoothly as they do. Uh, and it's those people and their experience and their dedication to, uh, to the departments and to the city. Uh, currently we have forty staff members and in your packet, I included a, uh, a, a current organization chart of who, who they all are and what areas they, uh, work in. I can say that in the time I've been here, uh, we probably have the best staff and the best trained, uh, uh, staff that all work very well together. No matter if you're in the water side or the wastewater side, something has to be done with the levee or so forth. So, uh, I'm not gonna go through all those, but, uh, just wanted you to have that update. Uh, we currently have forty staff members. We have been as high as forty-five, I think, uh, in my time with the department. Uh, we've had a couple of retirements as, uh, Chief was just talking about in his department. Uh, we had, uh, Mark Berry served twenty-one years with the wastewater side, uh, retired, uh, this past month. And Dennis Houter retired in the water department for forty-three years. So, uh, uh, we lost two guys there to retirement with a total years of experience with us of sixty-four years. Um, the second pa, uh, there's another page right behind that chart, uh, that just talks about our people that are licensed for the various licenses that, that we are required. We're a heavy, heavily regulated department and, uh, these licenses are not optional. They're, they're required. And I will say, we've done a pretty good job over the years of encouraging our younger folks to seek licenses, uh, in the various areas, uh, that they are, uh, working in. So, uh, we're real happy. Just to give you some idea, um, on the drinking water side, when I took over the position back in two thousand four and I replaced Jim Curlin, Jim Curlin walked out the door with the only drinking water license that we had in the department. So, uh, I kind of made a pledge that we would not let that happen again. Uh, and you can see here that we've, we've really staffed that up with people that are licensed for what we're doing. Uh, wastewater was as well. Uh, we, we had a, a, a private company doing the wastewater side at the time. And they really, they, I think maybe they had one person here that had the appropriate license, but he wasn't really the manager. So, um, you can rest assured that we are fully licensed now, uh, and trained to do what we're, we're being asked to do. Um, there's a sheet here that, that, uh, and I'll talk about projects a little bit here and maintenance. Uh, and you saw my cover sheet is really how I like to talk about utilities. And anytime you're talking about a report of how we're doing, I always look at those five measures. Uh, and, and that's how I would grade any, any utility. That, that's how I would do a grade card. Uh, service, compliance, maintenance, debt management, and rate management. And I'm gonna just touch on each one of those areas. And any of this information, if, if you take it and, and review it and you have a question later on, feel free to call me and, and ask me about it. Or if I can't answer it, I'll get someone that can. Um, the sheet that talks about June twenty, twenty-one update, Vincent's Water Utilities Major Goals. Uh, this was shared with the USB Board at the, uh, June USB meeting. Uh, but it's timely, uh, that I'm here talking about this because this gives you an idea, not only of how we run things and, and how, how this list gets created is in the fall to, to end of the year, every year, our, our staff members put together a, a list of things, priorities that we think this coming year should be our goals of major projects. There's a lot of things that aren't on this list that we do on a routine basis. But, and things get added to the list. Things get moved. Uh, you know, we find out that maybe that's not as important as something else. So, uh, something might get moved. But this is how we track how we're doing throughout the year in the various departments. Uh, I'm not gonna go through line by line on these, but I will hit a couple of highlights. Um, I think it was two thousand nineteen, we had a meeting in here talking about Forbes Road and flooding. At that same meeting, we talked about Inman Field, uh, and the alley over behind Inman Field and flooding. Um, both of those projects are now complete. Uh, with the exception of just a, some, some grading and grass seeding and, and, and finish the punch list. Uh, Forbes Road's complete, uh, the drainage issues, uh, you know, are, have been resolved as best we can do that within the, the resources that we have. So, um, I think you'll see, uh, a, a, a real long-term improvement there. Um, Inman Field, we work with the school corporation and, um, cleaned up some things out there. Uh, got some water, you know, the schools had built a lot of, um, impervious area out there over the years. They've added to that bus barn several times, put a lot of hard surface in for parking, built that new building for the, the, uh, football locker rooms and baseball practice facility. And all that water had to go somewhere. And it was going into the neighbors' yards there. Uh, so we, uh, we worked with, uh, John Sprague, helped it with that, uh, project. And we came up with a design to get the water going in the storm drains instead of in the neighbors' yards. And I think if you go out there and look at it, uh, you'll be very pleased with the outcome of that. The third historical project I'd like to just give a brief update on is the levee. Uh, as you all know, uh, probably since two thousand six, you can pick a year in there between six and ten, kind of when we, when we really got serious about getting our act together with regard to the levee. Um, we probably, as a community, spent over ten million dollars on the levee improvements and maintenance and upkeep that we're, we were behind, uh, we were lacking on. I can report today that, that, uh, as I always say, the levee is not a project, it's a program. It's gonna continue. We're gonna have to continue to keep an eye on, uh, the, the, that infrastructure. But, but what I can say is the major issues have all been addressed. The last project with regards to the levee, uh, to attain our levee, our positive levee system evaluation from the Corps of Engineers to FEMA, which in turn should help us, will help us make, get our, our flood mapping, our updated flood maps done with Vincent's being a levee-protected community as we always have been, uh, is, is well on its way. We would hope to get all of that paperwork and documentation finalized yet this summer. And, uh, that will be a happy day. Um, as you know, uh, the, the city, the RDC, the utilities, the university, the hospital, the KCDC, the, um, I said that wrong. It's the, well, it was KCDC when they donated the money. So I'm off the hook on the new name there, but, um.
It'll take a while.
Uh, who am I leaving out? Vincent's University, uh, were, uh, were all huge, uh, factors in getting, getting that last project done, uh, which cost about two and a half million dollars. Um, the rest of this li, this list is all our ongoing things that we're working on. Probably a couple of note there is, uh, we're replacing the water main on Main Street Phase Two. We hope to get that done yet this fall ahead of the construction of the actual road. Um, and I will say that, that at no time ever have we been more coordinated than we are now about road projects and, and utility, our utilities. now about road projects and, and utility, our utilities, water and sewer and storm, being upgraded or replaced or fixed ahead of a new road project in town. It's very good cooperation and communication between the mayor's office, the city engineer, our own departments and the engineers that are working for us. So that has boded well. Forbes Road's a perfect example of that. Main Street's another example. Second Street's an example. I mean, you can go around the town and, and look at all the examples of projects that have, that have been that way. Okay, in the area of service, well, I, I, I want to say this. When we're talking about projects and maintenance, you've heard me say, and I'm, I'm saying this as an estimate, we've got about a billion dollars' worth of infrastructure out there that we take care of. But we always go by, take care of what we have, that's the first priority. Finish what we start. That's a, you know, we're talking about Main Street or Forbes Road. And plan for the future. And part of that plan for the future is, and, and you'll see, I, I attached our financial, our year-end financial statements, I'm not going to go into an accounting exhibit here tonight, but you can see on there that, that we have to have reserves. We have to have money. We can't run a zero-balance bank account when you're working on taking care of a billion dollars' worth of infrastructure that could break tomorrow. I mean, we have a lot of moving parts if you think about everything that we do. So that's, that's kind of what we look at on a daily basis. Moving on to service, we've done some things in the last few years that you're all familiar with. The radio read metering has been a huge improvement to customer service. I don't know if any of you have had that kind of, any experience with, with our department, if you've encountered a leak on your, your own personal system at home or you have a business, but we can detect those from watching the usage on your meter. We don't watch it, we get a, we get a notice off of the system that says, hey, that house is running a continuous meter that you probably have a leak. And we've, we've saved a lot of time, energy, argument, money with that system. In your packet, I believe I included another initiative that we have, which is this sheet that has the months on it. And talks about our, our, our push for online bill payments, e-billing, all of that. We do a lot of, that's really the only area we really advertise and it's paying off. Four years ago, I'm going to say approximately, we probably had zero people on e-billing, probably three years ago. Online bill pay, we had some, but not to the tune. Right now, you can see there on the water side, just look at May, we had nineteen hundred people make online payments. We have about eighty-five hundred accounts. So we've, we've increased that from zero. I know it was zero back fifteen years ago because we just didn't do it. So obviously that bodes well for, for efficiency. It, it, it improves our cost factors in terms of sending out postage and envelopes and paper. So that, that is going well for us. Anytime we're talking about service, we want to be timely, responsive, decisive, and reliable. And the way we do that is we, we still have during the workday from seven-thirty in the morning until four in the afternoon, humans answering our phones. And, and we'll talk to you. And we'll, and then after hours, we also have on-call people on, on all of the, the, whether sewer, water. So I think we're fair with people. I'm sure there are examples out there that someone may have walked away thinking that we weren't fair, but I think for the most part, fairness is something that we can do as a local municipal utility. You know, we're not do, I'm not, I'm not complaining about any other, I won't even mention any other names. But the big utilities, the, the national brands, you know, they're fair. I'm sure they, they, their, their idea of fairness is, is something also. But because we're local, I think, and we're closer to the customer than, than many others are. So compliance is a big deal in, in, in what we do, obviously. The, and I just wanted to rifle down through, you know, you've heard me talk about EPA, IDIM, Skateboard of Accounts, Army Corps of Engineers, DNR, NPDES permits. And the list goes on with regulators. But just this year, we have, we have completed an, an IDIM sanitary survey inspection of our water facilities. Found four minor violations that were corrected immediately. They were labeling and some things like that. We had a levee system annual inspection by the Corps of Engineers. On July fifteenth, we're going to have an MS4 audit. That's Jake Personette's area. And we're in the process of renewing that permit. In twen, late twenty-twenty, they entered, the legislature introduced a new rule that we had to abide by, a state mandate, that we had to do what was called a water loss audit. Well, that was a fancy name for, uh, uh, one way that I describe it is a municipal utility colonoscopy. Because you had to tell them, I mean, they got into, I mean, it was, I don't know, twenty-five pages, small space, front and back, you know, how many people have this size meter and how many have that size meter? I really don't know what the objective of that is. They're gathering a lot of data, gathering a lot of data on water utilities throughout the state of Indiana. Not sure what the objective is, but obviously we sit in a very good spot with regards to our water availability. There are people in other parts of the state that aren't in quite as good a spot. So they're going to have a lot of information. The most recent thing that we've encountered in terms of regulation, I'll just say that, I won't get into the, the Environmental Protection Agency of the United States has come up with a certification of community water system risk and resilience assessment and compliance with America's Infrastructure Act of two, two thousand eighteen. That also was due, I think it was due today or the, by the first of July, which we've completed that. Another long report, given them a lot of information. There, there's governments, both at the national level and the state level, are getting very, very interested in our utilities, for whatever reason. And all util, all water utilities. So just keep that in mind. You have in there, and you've all been mailed that if you're on our system, the twenty-twenty-one CCR report. That's a required report that we send out to all water customers. The reason I put that in there is just to point out that, that, that doesn't happen automatically. That report is the culmination of about five hundred regularly scheduled water sampling, sampling at various locations throughout the community. It's, it's judged, or it's, it's, the samples are run by outside entities and, and we met all those requirements. The last couple of things I wanted to mention, which I think is very important for someone like yourselves and the mayor and, and our citizens really, to think about in terms of our utilities, is, you know, I've already talked about, you know, are we taking care of what we have? But you really need to think about, you know, debt management and rates. I mean, it's easy to take care of what you have if you just run everything in the ground, run it until it doesn't run anymore, and then buy a new one. That might not be the cheapest option, but that's the easiest way to do it. And the easiest way to buy new ones is just come to you. As you know, there's only two things that you all can do that we can't do. We can't borrow money without the council's approval and we can't raise rates or change rates without the council's approval. All the other stuff is up to us as a utility service board. So I think it's important for people to understand kind of, well, where does your utility rank in terms of rates? And, you know, where's your debt situation? How's your debt situation look? So there's a couple pages in there that, and you've seen that rate survey before, that hasn't changed. We didn't redo it this year. You know, we're on a program where we're, we're doing a rate study every four years and we made that report a year ago, that everything was fine. We were not encouraging any changes there and we're, we're still with that same recommendation. But you can see there, on a combined basis, for Vincennes water and sewer rates, we are at, for five thousand gallons, that's the standard number that people compare prices with, seventy-one dollars and fifty-six cents, and we are fourth from the bottom on this list. I didn't pick these, we didn't pick these just because they were all higher than us. This is just the list that Crowe has used multiple times for studying our region and our, our utility. You can see other communities, both larger and smaller, that are significantly higher than, than we are. And I know Chris is in the audience and we talk about this a lot when he gets requests for proposals for new industries. And there's a lot of those floating around these days through IEDC and, and water is becoming a bigger, bigger deal, water and sewer, but particularly water and not only the, the rate, but the availability. And we're in good shape on both of those. On the debt side, I think we're in excellent position. Like I said, we've probably got a billion dollars' worth of infrastructure out there. And you can see there, I crossed off the twenty-twenty payments. We made those payments on time. And, but I didn't change the, the totals down at the bottom, but we've only got three years to go on the sewer, no, I'm wrong about that. We've got about five years to go on the sewer and the sewer department will be completely out of debt. Now, that doesn't mean that it's just, you know, happy days are here again. You know, we've got a twenty-year-old, if Josh Moore was standing here, he would tell you, we've got a twenty-year-old wastewater facility. I already told you, there's a lot of moving parts. We're keeping up with it. Each, each year, each month, we talk a lot, we put it on our list. So we're not going to get to the end of the payment book and have a pile of junk over here. But that, I think, is rather common in municipal utility funding, is you borrow it up, put it all in brand-new, and then run it. And then when your debt's paid off, you do it again. We're hoping that we can continue to maintain every day as opposed to just, you know, when the, when the last payment's made. On the water side, we have a little bit running off. Next year, actually, in twenty-twenty-two, we'll make our last payment on the two thousand three SRF loan. I think that loan was to build the water tank, the water tower by the armory and some other improvements that were made at that time. So I just wanted to say a couple of things about the future and then we'll, we'll shut up, I know. There's always a list. There, there are things in it, this community sits in a bowl right next to a river. We have probably the biggest, we, we've tackled, in my opinion, one of the biggest challenges, which was the levee. And, and like I said, that's going to be ongoing. But when you think about this community, you have to think about City Ditch, Mantle Ditch, and Kelsall Creek. And if any of you go out and look at those three drains, those are our major drains in the basin of Vincennes, none of those are in real good shape. There have been studies done years ago, back in the eighties, nineties, that for City Ditch and Mantle Ditch, I'm not aware that we've ever done a study on Kelsall Creek.
Kirk, when was the last major construction on any of those?
Well, probably the, the nineteen eighties, under the Rose administration, the City Ditch was worked on, on the lower, lower end of it, out by Willow Street, kind of between Willow and on up, upstream, up toward Four Lakes. Mantle Ditch, I'm not aware there's been anything done to Mantle Ditch inside the city. We, we did some work out, out there by the Memoring Edition a few years ago, but that was relatively minor. We've never, we haven't done anything major to any of those. Kelsall Creek, probably the last time anything major was done to that was at the Plaza, when they armored both sides of the, of the ditch and took out the culverts and put bridges in so it doesn't flood as, like it used to. So that, that's, that's on, you know, that's on the list. We'd like to get a sanitary sewer connection from, from Hart Street over to Elkhorn Road to provide that. And that, you know, I've been involved in the housing study a little bit, I've been in on some of those calls and, you know, that's something that's near and dear to my heart. You can talk about all these areas that might make sense to do housing, but we've got to make sure we've got the utilities there and can get them there and who, how are we going to pay for that? Can we afford that? You've heard me say, there's a thousand households on the perimeter of Vincennes, not in Vincennes, but on the perimeter of Vincennes, that are without municipal sewer, that really need municipal sewer. One thousand households. We're talking about the, what do they call it? The, the money that's come from the feds to, what is it?
America Rescue Plan.
Yeah, the rescue plan funds, the state of Indiana's getting a lot of, we got some here at the city that you all have. We, we met with the head of the Indiana Finance Authority and talked about a couple of projects that we had with regard to drinking water and, and how they might qualify. And one of the problems that we have is he, he couldn't believe, Joe was there that day, he couldn't believe how low our water rates were. And they actually put that in the criteria, that your water rate needs to be at a certain level. Or the way they look at that is, well, you guys need to help yourself before we do any grant funding for it.
That's so frustrating.
It's backwards.
Yeah, it's backwards. You run an efficient place and keep the rates down and, and the accessibility to water also helps keep those rates down. And we get punished for doing the right thing. It's frustrating.
But I'm seeing some change in that a little bit. And, and we're, we're working on a proposal. One of the things that we're thinking about is a fifth water tower out in the Hart Street area. And that kind of goes along with some of the, the talk about residential and I think you all knew back, know, back on April the ninth, we had an issue with the Fox Ridge tank. It was fairly isolated and our insurance took care of all those people that were affected by that. The scope on the internet was a lot greater than it really was. I know that's hard for you all to believe, but. I know that's hard for you all to believe, but I've got something here. I'll just mention that.
How many homes were affected by that?
That's what I'm going to tell you.
Just to put it in perspective. Hundreds, wasn't it?
Based on reports to us, and we ask for people to, you know, come to us instead of just blasting out there, you know, people in Los Angeles don't really care what.
Oh, but they do.
20. 20 people responded to us in some fashion or form. You know, it's varying issues, you know, it might be a water line in the yard. It might be a hot water heater that failed. Some of them are questionable as to, well, did this issue really cause your problem? Or did you have the problem before? But we've worked through all that. And so it's, it's 20 people. The total cost of, of the damage on this report, $26,400.
And how many of those 20 didn't get the proper service?
I see one here that's got a note on it that the insurance was disputing it. But, you know, the insurance adjuster's taking care of, of all of it. So that was a bigger deal online than it really was out in the field. But anyway, it raised some issues about, you know, backup capabilities and, and, you know, a Fox Ridge would be down for an extended period. Fox Ridge is really a very important water source for us there because of the growth of housing and, and everything in that area, and it helps our pressure system. You know, we're probably looking, we're, we're real close to borderline needing a fifth tank, and it needs to be out there. And we're doing a study right now. That's all we're doing right now. But we're also looking at that rescue plan money and thinking, you know, is that, is that the potential avenue to, to pick up some, some grant dollars to help solve an issue for us? So I'm going to stop with all projects and all that. We could talk all day. I just want you to know that, and I say this about every year I come here, if I ever come here and tell you something different, there's a problem. But our utilities are strong from an operational staffing and financial standpoint. You're welcome to review what I've given you. If you find something you've got a question about, I'd be happy to answer it. We're not recommending any changes in rates at this time. Our goal every day is to be the best municipal utilities in the state. But we'll leave it to others to judge how we're doing on that. And like I said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And we're always open for, I know everybody's busy. The last thing you think of when you get up in the morning is, hey, I've got to go out and take a tour of the wastewater plant today.
Well, unless it doesn't work, and, and that's, that's the issue. You guys do such a good work. I don't think people ever think about you until something doesn't work. And, and that, thank God, is not very often.
So.
Good job.
That's my report.
The goal of being the best in the state, I have no idea, that we have the best utilities in this state. And I bet you could ask several engineering firms that have looked at this facility would tell you the same thing, is because of Kirk and his entire crew. There are communities that come here to look at what we're doing.
We've had, we've had Carmel, we've had Westfield, we've had Terre Haute, we've had Indianapolis, particularly looking at what we're doing on the wastewater side. Josh Moore and his group out there has been amazing with, you know, again, regulations from on high come down. They don't have dollars with them usually when they tell you, well, we found that, we think you ought to take phosphorus from this level down to this level, and you've got until the end of three years from now to figure out how to do that. But we're not giving you any money for that. That's what Josh has been doing, and that's what we've been able to do. And that's what's getting attention, is the methods that we're using is, is more technical than, than a lot of these places are used to, even the names that I name, so.
So I would agree that you've met your goal of being the best in the state. I truly, truly believe that.
I mean, we're truly blessed to have your department, your crew constantly working. And I always, when you show us the combined sewer and water rates, I mean, that's one of the bigger successes that you have because if you go north a little bit to Sullivan, it's $45 more. You go over to Washington, it's $35 more. Go to Princeton. These, these close communities, that's close to $15 more. I mean, just right here in our area, not to mid, not to mention some of the other places. So for what you're able to do, the investments, the upkeep, that we know that when I turn a switch, that water's going to turn on, and things are going to be drained, and it's just going to happen because we have the infrastructure to be able to do that. But you forget that billion, billion-dollar infrastructure is right underneath our feet. We don't see it every day, but we expect it to work, and you guys are working hard to make sure that every single day those things work. And I do thank you for that.
Thank you.
Kirk, what I see every time you come, what amazes me is this page right here.
The people?
The people, it never changes, and that says a lot about you and your entire management and all, your, your whole career out there. That just amazes me every year.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Well, it has changed a little. We've had some people retire.
But they retired.
You know, I, I look at that, you know, I've, I've been there 18 years now, and I, I did a number the other day, just because I was curious. I looked down the list, and 2/3 of the people that are currently working for us, I've hired. You know, because when I hired, you know, we had 650 years of experience and a lot of, a lot of people that were heading toward retirement. So we've, we've been blessed with the, the, the benefits, the work environment, the equipment that we have, that when we do get people, they stay. And, and they learn from the, the senior people, you know, the system, because that's important. I mean, it can all be on the computer, and it can be on paper, and, but the, our guys, for the most part, know what's out there, and if something breaks, they can get to it quickly.
Yeah. Not easy work, though. I mean, you drive by these guys, you know, it's 10 degrees out, and they're in a whole pool of water. And not, not many people would stay on a job doing that for very long, but these guys have, and we, we're grateful for that.
Being able to retain those people is pretty important in a town that's 1732 as well. You know, knowing what's under the ground here is, is key. And you have people like Dave Abel, too, that's outstanding in what he does there and has been for years. So thank you, seriously.
The best thing that this council ever did, and none of you can take credit for this, was in 1935, the city council and the mayor, at that time, accepted the, the recommendation from John Welsh, who was Governor Welsh's older brother, I believe. John Welsh was a local investment guy, and he recommended at that time that the city buy the water utility from the private business that owned it. And the council agreed to do that. They borrowed a million and a quarter, 1.25 million in 1935, and bought the water utility back for the community. And it's been very, very well-run by just two or three managers since that time. You know, Mr. Kirland and Mr. Schwartz were there most of those years. I've been there now 17, but when you think about it, that debt was paid off in 1955 or so, when, when we moved from BU or from Green Auditorium out here. But that was a smart move, and probably the second smartest move was when we divorced ourselves of the private contractor that was running our sewer department back in 2005, 2006.
I also want to thank the individuals that serve on the board that give their time to help oversee our utilities. I appreciate all the work they do, working with you and all the crew out there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk.
Okay, we'll move on to Urban Enterprise Zone Concerns. Brett Dawson.
Hey, my name's Brett Dawson. I'm Doss Force Technology, 402 North 7th Street. Here to express some concerns. I've been dealing with the urban enterprise and the way it's, the whole process of the applications since January 2020. And throughout my experiences, I've noticed a, almost like a two, two separate sets of standards on how the money's handed out or how, what's required to present to that board. And I just wanted to make the city council aware of my personal experiences and hope that maybe something in the future can change and maybe more set standards. So I sent out an email, kind of a timeline. I'll run down through this. Looks lengthier than it really is. So starting in January 2020, presented two quotes to the interurban enterprise board about some exterior renovations to the building there. Included tuck pointing and windows, two quotes. One came from Pittman Construction and then Ortega Construction. They're, neither one of them are local, but they were doing interior work for me on the remodel of the building after we bought it. So they're already on site. We got a great price from them and thought we'd take advantage of that. Presented to the board their concern, or they turned down the quotes because they were not local contractors. I found this quite odd. Pittman Construction previously was doing a job for the city at the time, Greg Park. So my thought was, it's good enough for the city to hire, but not good enough for a city board to accept it for a private business. Moved on, said, okay, there are rules, different sets. We'll move on. Couple weeks went by, ran into one of the board members, and he just happened casual conversation, told me that a comment came up during that meeting, because you have to leave once you present, and then it's all discussed after you leave. So you're not involved in the discussion after you make a presentation. So you, you read about in the paper before you get a phone call. So you're either already mad or already excited by the time you get that phone call because you weren't included that day. You, you leave. But this board member told me that someone brought up, didn't get names of who, but that maybe I shouldn't get the money because I don't live. My residence is not in Vincennes. I live in Wheatland. And, but my business is operating in Vincennes for almost 10 years now. And I'm, you know, I invested back in Vincennes and have every, you know, intention of staying. I mean, I plan on relocating. So we moved on from, that was the first meeting. So roughly November, December, you know, COVID hit, so the schedule got really crazy. Things were closed. And so it was in that rough time period there, presented another quote, since the other two got turned down, from C&amp;Z Masonry, new company. He did some, also some interior renovations for me, liked his work. So I asked him to give me a quote. I presented it back to the UAA Board, and to my surprise, they asked me to see if he can change the quote to come closer to Pittman's numbers. If you like Pittman's numbers so much, we probably should have accepted that quote. I thought that was kind of odd because there weren't the ones soliciting the quotes. I was responsible for getting those, and it's not easy to get contractors to come out when they know they very well may not get the job because it takes a lot of time to bid on those projects and get the numbers right. At that particular meeting, the board did not really ask me any questions. Kind of heard me out, said thanks, then you, you know, you leave, and then you're not involved with any of the discussions. And then the next day, I got a call from Dan. He does the calls. Get along great with Dan, by the way. He's a non-voting member, as he explained to me, and, you know, he does what he, what he does. And he, he presented a list of questions that could have easily been answered there instead of waiting months to go back before then with a list of these questions. I was kind of upset about that because I could have answered all those on the spot and it wouldn't have been postponed once again. And so we moved on, rolled over into January. I submitted an adjusted quote. Surprisingly, the contractor, when I told him to come down on price, was a little shocked at first, but he did rework numbers, and he did pull Pittman's quote from me. He asked for it, and I gave it to him. And he did the best he could, and it was still, it came in about $90,000. His original quote was about $101,000, I want to say. They said that's the best he could do because, of course, construction costs go up. It was inflation, and I think we're all well-aware of the crazy inflation that's been going on this past year with construction prices. So I presented that, and their response was, you only have one quote now. Okay? So they could have told me in the November meeting, I could have got two quotes, but I thought we were going to keep the other quotes that weren't local, but that wasn't the case, as we're thrown out. But at this time, a year's passed, so those quotes, honestly, I couldn't ask those guys to honor them because of inflation costs. So I said, all right. It would have been nice to know. I could have been working on that. And then Dan informed me that a specific board member asked for a scope of the project. Though, well, that scope of the project was also included in the very first meeting. I thought they would have saved those papers, but they must have been thrown in the trash. So I came up with a new scope plus the old scope. I had my wife make that up, since she does that quite often in her job. So it was a nice, professional, and very accurate scope of work that would be done. So I leave that meeting and reading the paper between the next meeting, Sherclean presents themselves with a project. They bid on their own project. One quote accepted. Mild discussion, but the end result was, they bid on their own project. It got accepted with only one quote. It's well documented in the paper. I'm sure most people got to read that. It was another, kind of two standards for people. Really irritated me, so I moved on to June. I was really frustrated at this time we were going in. And I was able to get Wolf Construction to come out. I was like, okay, if we don't know who Wolf Construction is and doesn't think their, their work is quality work, I think was the word used for Sherclean. Their work speaks for themselves. Well, Wolf, Wolf's been around a long time to do a lot of big projects. So we get the quote. I presented it this, this month. A few questions were asked. One of them was almost questioning the integrity of the contractors of all the quotes I've ever gotten for them. Okay, I contacted six contractors, ended up getting five quotes. One was a re-quote. And, and I've, I've pretty much exhausted all the contractors that do masonry work. This, this is for a major masonry. The building's three stories tall, all brick. Three layers of brick from outside to inside, no wood. Okay, a lot of brick. That's how it was built in 1884. And the brick work has not been touched, for your record, since then. I had an engineering firm come out and actually look at it and write a full-blown report. And if anybody would like to see that, I could get that to you. So they're up, they asked if I ever had any of these contractors do work or seen their work. Thought that is a weird question as well. And I have. I hired almost all of them, and I made the statement. Made a, seemed a little off-putting, but if you didn't know who Wolf Construction was, you weren't looking very hard because they're all over. And then the next question I got rubbed me off as almost, they want me to just kind of stop talking and go away because then they asked, well, what are you wanting to do exactly? Okay, this has been a year and a half. I've been to multiple meetings. And then there was no further questions. I moved on, saw the article in the Sun commercial the next day because you asked to leave, so you read about it there before you get the phone call. And I see William Henry Harrison House gets $50,000 approved. Good for them. By no means am I upset with anybody gets your money. Take it and run if you have the opportunity. It's not your problem, but take it. You got it. Did a little research. Contractors from Harrison House is out of Columbus, Ohio, and the architects are coming from the East Coast. Different set of standards for them than it was for me. Then they say Doss Force awarded ten thousand dollars, little insulted, I did a year and a half's worth of work, ten thousand dollars. Pull up my line item sheet from Wolf Construction, realizes that would pay for a dumpster and city permits. So I got money to get back to the city real quick, no construction would be completed with that. And I couldn't call Wolf Construction up and ask them, how many bricks can you tuck point for ten thousand dollars? So, but there's also stipulations on that, as reported in the paper. I must spend twenty thousand dollars to get to ten thousand, it had to be on masonry. As it was stated, they also said that was an unusual circumstance to be put on by this board. At least it's how it was reported, I don't know if it's unusual, because like I said, you're, you have to leave once you're done presenting, so you don't know. And then later on, you go down and then they awarded Dots some money, the owner of Dots, I don't know if that's actually who was under the business or the actual person. But that particular building, everybody knows where it's at. And there was a disagreement discussion about how the restoration of the historical sign they uncovered on their building is going to be redone, are you going to paint it or put vinyl up? Little discussion, disagreement, but there was a comment made about in, you know, kind of summarizing it, you shouldn't be able to put stipulations on the money, you give them the money or you don't, you can't tell them how to do it. I thought it was weird, because I had stipulations on my money. And the, you know. So then we moved on, and then in the paper, it also stated that similar sized projects, exterior work, all brick, those big buildings. In the past, Procopio's got about forty thousand, I think is what it stated, and sixty thousand for Old Chicago. It was roughly about fifty percent from my understanding of the court, of the project was paid for. I got maybe ten percent, but like I said, it wouldn't even cover any construction, so in my mind, it was really a zero percent, I was get to, I got to buy some dumpsters to sit on the road. So that was kind of up through this meeting, did a little bit of my own research and my concerns are there seems to be some biased decisions made, two sets of standards, depending on who you are. Made the comment that I did everything that was asked, I may not, the only thing that I didn't meet was, I may not have a certain name that gets the money. And that's unfortunate, because I really expected more, once I was approached to do this U E A program. But it really turned into kind of a nightmare and I wanted to quit, because I really didn't see a chance of me getting any money, that's how the, the message I was getting. Matter of saying it's grant money and it's, and it's city funded program. And this was my last stop, I may not get any money, but I think that there needs to be some oversight and a set, set of standards on how to apply for this grant and the requirements, because there is none, it's a free-for-all. And it's just on, it's on a case-to-case basis on whoever you can. There is, there is no possible way to go in there saying, I have everything, I'm going to get this percentage. And that's, yeah, and if you guys have any comments or concerns, but that was my story on the process of dealing with the U E A board and that whole grant application and it seemed to be very unfair.
I have some questions of not necessarily you, but
Yeah.
But Dan and John, who are representatives, Dan's kind of a representative of ours. And is it, is guys, is it a grant or is it a reimbursement?
It's a reimbursement.
Has that been consistent to everybody's construct things?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I was told upfront that you, you pay first and you get reimbursed.
Okay.
But your money is set, you know, if they say, we'll reimburse you ten thousand dollars, you're getting reimbursed ten thousand dollars.
Is there a scoring system that's put in place for when people apply, is there a standard application that, that is, then scored based on whatever criteria you've set up over time? Is there?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So there, okay. Well, that answers a lot of the questions. So how is it determined who, who receives what funding and, and when, are they consistent? I guess that's the question I would have. I mean, that's why I think Mr.
Is it a standard percentage of the construction?
I think, are you a board president that's here, Jim Ziegler, he could answer that better than I could.
And then, then the other question, I want to, and Jim, if you're willing to answer too. Is, is his recollection of what's happened, an accurate portrayal of what he's had to go through? That's, that's a question I would like to know too.
Most of it, I actually pulled out of the paper.
Sure.
Because I wanted to make sure that there was not left for interpretation of hearsay.
I'm sure his recollection, his reflection is not necessarily my reflection. And you do have a number of board members on the board. And they believe different things, but they usually come together when they make an award. That doesn't mean every board member agrees with the award, but it does mean that the majority of the members agree with it. And usually, a motion is made by someone to award so much, it has to have a second. You have some awards die without a second. We get a second and it either passes or fails. And that's kind of how we do it. Now, we, we probably don't have any hard and fast rules when it comes to awards or anything else. You know, we get our income, and I, I can use this floor for my own purposes, because a lot of things go on, not a lot of things, but one thing in particular that I love. And that is that we started giving residential awards, five thousand dollars to residential people. And really, all they got to spend to get that five thousand dollars is five thousand dollars. So yet, they just got to bring us a copy of the work they had in them in their check. Now, we don't accept anything from contractors, you have to be an owner who lives in that house to get one. So that's well unfair. Here's my point. How, how is the U E Z funded? It's funded through businesses filling out an E Z B R. Now, our funds come from, I'll, I'll just give you some examples of funds. In two thousand eighteen, that is pay two thousand nineteen, so it works just like property taxes. All right? You fill out an E Z R and file it in two thousand eighteen, and you have to pay it by July first of two thousand nineteen. They're all either filled out by CPAs or your attorney or something. In two thousand eighteen, pay nineteen, the Urban Enterprise Zone got a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. In two thousand nineteen, pay twenty, we got a hundred and thirty-three thousand. In twenty, pay twenty-one, that's now, we have collected seventy-seven thousand dollars. We got up till July first to collect one million. I think I would at this point, if you don't mind, name five of our top recipients or top givers. Shop is one, Marriott ironically is another. Old Chicago is one. Montana Likes is one, and Will Bash Steeler, that would be five. Now, I'll use mine as an example. I'm not in the top five, but I'm somewhere down, because there's twenty-five or thirty people after that, that give smaller amounts. I'll give you mine.
That money is collected through a tax credit in a sense, right?
Well, we pay it directly to the Urban Enterprise Zone.
Do you, then as a business owner, do you save money on taxes some other way though?
Let, let me jump over that.
Okay.
When, when your CPA fills out your E Z B R, seventy-five percent, and this is new investment, okay, this is how I want to explain it. This is seventy-five percent of new investment, you, you don't pay, you pay twenty-five percent of that to the Urban Enterprise. This is complicated. So, you mean printing this year, twenty-eight hundred dollars?
Is that still on that new addition of yours that you built a few years ago, is that what it is?
It's from new investment that I made from Prongo, the Woody, two thousand and ten.
Okay, yeah.
And, and you can add a little bit each year, or if, if you're not buying new stuff, then it goes down, so it can go up and go down. I still pay twenty-five thousand in May, property taxes, and I still pay twenty-five thousand in November. Even though I paid this twenty-eight hundred. The theory is that I might have paid thirty thousand each time, okay? Let's take the Marriott as an example, because it's one that might help you understand a little bit more about it. The Marriott built on sixteen rooms after the, they initially got started, and they didn't file an E Z B R when they first built it. Why, I don't know, they didn't. They came to us, they filed with this sixteen rooms additions, they would have paid if, if it went on, property taxes, they would have paid two hundred thousand dollars. They ended up saving a hundred and fifty thousand. And they paid the Urban Enterprise Zone fifty, and that was three years ago. So now, what we're waiting for in July one is thirty-four thousand, because they're down from fifty to thirty-four. And why we had more income last year than we did the year before is because they were behind and when they filed bankruptcy, the bank took it over and the bank sees, you know, the positive effect of the Urban Enterprise Zone. So the bank actually came to us, we called a special meeting, we allowed them to refile. And so they filed now for twenty-one, so hopefully, the bank will still see this, I can't believe they wouldn't. And they'll pay this thirty-four thousand in July one, because the bank is going to sell this hotel to somebody. And it must be a good thing, it's generating its own money, so somebody will buy it. And they want that hundred and fifty thousand dollar discount, or whatever it's down to now, a hundred and thirty or a hundred and twenty, and they would like that. So that is how we get our money. But I think our mission of the Urban Enterprise Zone is to make places in the Urban Enterprise Zone to improve the looks, to draw business to the Urban Enterprise Zone, draw them in there. And how do we help them, we help them by improving the outsides of their buildings, the looks of the Urban Enterprise Zone. And that was never stronger than, see, the Urban Enterprise Zone has expanded from its original, it was originally down Main Street, down Al Willoughby, down Second, and now we're on, so on Sixth and Second.
Jim, you may not believe this, but I drew the lines of the original when, when, under Mayor Mooney's administration, I worked here and served on the U E A in its inception. And then it was expanded a few years ago to that, so I guess the, the money being, it's changed how the money comes into the group, but I think what he's, he's really, his biggest complaint, I think, is how the money is being distributed. Just say that word for me. Anyway. Thank you, distributed. Do a cap. Anyway, I think his biggest concern is that he didn't feel like he was treated the same as Sherclean, who acted as their own, their own contractor. I understand, now, could he have been his own contractor and been able to receive money, that's a question I would ask?
Well, let me say a couple of things.
Sir, anyway, come over to my mic and talk. Because we got people watching live and they can't hear you.
No. Okay, so let's, let's, let's use the example of Old Chicago, because they're one of the top five. They were awarded sixty thousand dollars, but they were awarded thirty thousand one year and thirty thousand the next. Because I think you can see by the total amount of income that a thirty thousand dollar award is a lot of money, based on what we get each year. So they were, they done a two million dollar expansion there on Main Street. And if you stop and look at it on a percentage basis, we gave them three percent of their initial investment. Now, Grouslin just got fifty thousand dollars, and so I heard that mentioned. We gave them twenty-five this year, and we'll give them twenty-five in two thousand twenty-two. So they're doing a, a two and a half million dollar expansion, so that is two percent.
Jim.
Let's take Caitlin Ashby. She bought the Walks Building. When she came, we decided that is the last building on Main Street that we really need to take care of. In fact, we even discussed the fact that the Old Martins Building was in such bad shape that they had to tear it down and the city had to cover that cost and it was significant. We awarded her thirty thousand dollars. She had estimates well over two hundred. So we probably awarded her fifteen percent, you know, when, when you stop and look at it. But the other side of it, we kept that building from falling down.
I agree, I, I'm, I'm very, very pleased about that, what I'm saying is, is that upfront to the people that are coming to apply? If, if they paid in a whole bunch, does that mean that they could get some of that, recoup some of that money back? Is that ever part of a criteria that they would understand when they come and apply for money? I, I think he's really just upset about the, the equity of the situation, not necessarily who gets money, I don't think anybody, I think we're all happy that people get money. He just wants to know what rules he's playing with when he comes.
When Mr. Dawson came, he explained to us, he brought a, a quote from Wolf Construction for about a hundred and one thousand dollars. And I'm serving from memory now, Dan or John may help me, but I believe seventy thousand of it was for tuck pointing. The rest of it was some work they had to do prior to tuck pointing and some painting. So we had given him five thousand before for some windows up front in the building. That was last January, was it?
The constructor was then in January.
We, we, you already had him in before we gave you them.
I didn't even ask for that money, because I already had it paid for and done. The windows fell out and the city inspector at the time notified us, we just purchased that building. So we didn't put them in, because I didn't want a nine-foot, five-three-foot window, missing these building, to settle to the environment. But I didn't even ask for that money, I just, they just called me term receipts in.
Well, I, I'm just saying this, if he had a hundred and one thousand dollar estimate, if the windows, I, I don't know what they cost, we gave him five against them, I assume they cost ten.
Twelve thousand and eight hundred.
So there's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And we awarded him fifteen total, doesn't matter. And so that's about thirteen and a half percent. And so that's about thirteen and a half percent.
So is it percent what you're shooting for? Like, I mean.
No, no, it's not. And, and as I said, we, you're right. We don't have any hard, fast rules.
Would it, would it be beneficial to probably maybe get some of those so that we don't run into? And I'm not saying that you guys have an expertise. You guys have been there. I mean, that board, you've got a lot of people that are experienced in that board, where you're going by your knowledge, what you think. You've done this for X amount of years. So to make it a little bit easier, just, not just for you, but everybody else on the board, and new people that would come onto the board, uh, and I don't even think it had to be complex rules, but something set that, hey, this is the criteria that we follow that makes it easier for you so we don't come into situations like this. Does that make sense, or am I stepping out of line? Because I don't want to tell a board what to do. I mean, we've got our appointments to that board.
The, the board has, has discussed rules before. Am I not right, Dan?
That's correct.
And would you care to speak to what the general consensus was?
Well, no rules, no hard, fast rules have been applied yet. But there, there were discussion about maybe rules should be applied, but they haven't been determined.
What I would be very concerned about if I was a board member. Uh, it, without rules in place, I would worry about somebody becoming very angry and not coming to a city council meeting, but filing a suit that would say discrimination. That's what I would worry about if I was on that board.
Well.
And, and I, I mean, even on the R D C, we set a rubic, a rubric uh to be able to grade people when they come before us, before we would donate a lot or do those kind of things, so that we could ensure that we were kind of trying to protect ourselves and making it an, an equal process for whoever came before us, so.
So you always allow the same percentage uh based on what, what they're going to spend?
We have a scorecard that we go off of, uh, and, and then that is determined at that time based on their score.
And what does your scorecard take into de- determination?
Uh, it's, there's a number of things. It all goes from, uh, do these, especially with the homes, uh, does it go, does it fit the neighborhood? Does it, uh, increase the tax base? What does it do? Uh, is there some architectural diversity? We have a lot of different criteria that we've created. Dave actually drew it up for us.
Well.
Could that same scorecard be applied to this in a very little bit?
Well, I think they're their own organization, and they need to. I, I don't think we, as a council, have any, anything over them in any way.
We have, we have appointments to the board, and we appoint those.
To the board, that's it.
And your appointment to the board is the one that made the motion on Mr. Dawson's funding.
Jim, well, there was a couple of, uh, statements on here that similar, similar projects receive fifty percent of construction. Do you have the number on, uh, Procopio's and Old Chicago's?
Uh, Old Chicago's was three percent.
Was that, did that include exterior work only, or was that?
No, that.
Okay, so that number is an apples to apples then, because we've already done a lot of the interior work that we were told was not to be included in our calculations.
And, and it's only, only exterior work that we actually take into consideration.
Do we have a total on Procopio's and Old Chicago's exterior work?
I don't believe we do at this point, but Dan could get you one, couldn't you? And, and I, I don't think Procopio's, but see, I don't want to say now because I, I don't remember. I'd have to go back.
Exterior?
No, the total that award that we made to Procopio.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think it was over, it was two awards, wasn't it?
Right, exactly.
And I believe that, I don't remember exactly what it was, but Dan can find that out. And he spent a lot of money on the exterior of his building too.
Yeah. Yeah. And rebuild it structurally in front of Prokopio, didn't he?
Yeah.
I just didn't know if there's a certain standard, and you said there's no set rules of, you know, if somebody presents with a hundred thousand dollar project, we give them fifty thousand or twenty thousand.
Right.
Um, so that, that does seem problematic, but I agree, there has to be a, a, a certain stipulation of where the project is and, and like you said, walking, saving the walk building.
Yeah, how important is that to the community?
I agree with that, but I, is it, one thing that, that bothered me was, is it standard for questions like, or statements that they didn't live in Vincennes? It, is that, I mean, is that something that you look at? Do, do the applicants have to live?
The fact that he doesn't live in Vincennes?
Yeah.
No. I, I didn't even know that till you just said it. No, I, I didn't know that he wasn't living upstairs, to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
But.
So is it possible, then, you'll look at it, maybe a scoring system, or is it possible you'll look at a scoring system, maybe, to see if, uh?
We can if you direct us to.
We don't have the authority to do so. Yeah, we don't. All we can do is, our appointments to suggest that.
Well.
I think, I mean. To do that, but I, I think it'd be benefit, I mean, it would help you guys out.
Let, let, let me tell you something else. This was started in two thousand and two, and we're supposed to sunset in two thousand and twenty-two. And I just understand, so twenty-two would be our last year, except I understand that House Bill ten twenty-four or ten twenty-five was just passed. And I think it says that the urban enterprise zone could be renewed for another five years by a vote of the city council.
What would happen if, uh, if we didn't do, renew it? Uh, those tax breaks would then go away.
You know, they'll, they'll, they'll go back to what.
We would renew.
The, the county will, the county and the city, I, I can't say it isn't the city too.
I would say I would vote to renew it based on the tax breaks to our businesses.
The mayor knows this. When, when, uh, when they started giving five thousand to ten different people for residential, I came to him and I said, hey, it's not that this is a bad deal, because we do need to fix up residential property. But is it the urban enterprise zone mission, or isn't our mission to bring business into the zone? His is certainly a business coming into the zone. But we're giving away five thousand dollars at a whack up to ten people, so fifty thousand dollars a year on, but let's just say a hundred and thirty thousand dollar income.
Well, I think that the big thing that's brought to us is not, not so much the importance of it. I think the U E Z's done great work, and we've been able to do some great things in the zone. The question is, how do we make the, the experience, I guess, better, not just for Mr. Dawson, but for the people that are on the board as well? How do we make this situation streamlined so we don't run into these situations where, oh, I feel like this was biased against me, or I felt like I was being picked on because of this? When you have certain set of standards, that basically goes away. Does it, does it ever hap-? Of course, I mean, it does. But you're able to alleviate those issues because I've got a clear set standard that I'm going by. And you can set the standards up too for yourself and the organization to be flexible for the needs specifically of the U E Z. Um, and you, we've got a lot of great minds on there that could get that done, I believe.
I do too. And Rick, I'm just curious, do you get a tax break by being in the zone, or I know that.
So.
Me?
No.
So.
His business is.
Twenty twenty. Because I just moved into that zone, and I think, we moved in for last June.
Right.
When we actually opened, we bought the building late twenty nineteen, but then started construction, uh, shortly there, that time period. Um, the accountants, we ran into an issue in twenty twenty, um, some of the forms we had to fill out. Now, there's quite confusing. I'm not an accountant as far as those forms. There's one that you pull from Evansville, because they are the, is that the?
They get one percent. I said we get twenty-five, and that's a misstatement. We get twenty-four percent, and the state association collects one percent.
A I is the association of any enterprise.
Yeah, but you're.
One of the forms that we had to fill, I noticed that Dave had drawn them. I contacted them. They said they didn't have an updated form, and that one wasn't, couldn't file it because they were doing some revamping of it. I was kind of left, so I couldn't fill out one of the forms. We did file some of the others. Uh, you know, I just gave everything to my accountant. Like you said, accountants and attorneys fill those things out because it's.
What, what I, what, what I meant was that they file them in the auditor's office. It is the auditor's job to look at them, accept them, or deny them. Now, if somebody hasn't paid us by July the first, we can go over to the auditor's office and ask them not to accept their next application until they pay. And we've only been in this situation one time with one person. That's it.
And I just hope you are taking advantage of it, because.
Yeah.
I heard in all the forms, uh, from the left side, and Dan told me to look up to the accountants.
I can tell you this, the council, that when it comes to renew that, it should be a definite yes, because this is basically better than a tax abatement for these businesses. This is a tool that's used to help grow business in Vincennes, and it's been very successful.
And, and we've had a lot of successes.
Mr. Granger, to answer your earlier question, I have an article here from the Sun Commercial. Um, and Prokopio's project was forty-three thousand. We can see a twenty on that exterior renovation portion of it. So it, all of them that we found, and I did lots of research through the Sun Commercial and stuff historically, did go around that fifty percent mark. Um, like I said, we had, what? This, after this hundred thousand goes into it, for the exterior, we'll have about three hundred and some thousand into it. So we definitely already poured a lot of money into it. It's not like we're asking, we weren't, we weren't asking for our project to be paid for. That's not the intent, and our, and our complaint is not the money amount per se. It's just how it was organized and how the process I feel and he feels is not a fair game. And like I said, I've told him, we've discussed it. There's just not a fair playing field to know, you know, what I do with grants and, and that kind of programs, these programs all the time, and it's just not equal playing field to know what the name is to play in.
That's not right.
But, and, and I, and I appreciate your investment, I really do, in this community, and I, and I know the board. I don't, I know they do what they think is right, or try to make the absolute best decision in Vincennes. And the personnel, the property, I don't think they're maliciously doing anything to, uh.
What, what is our act outstanding now, Dan, of people that we promised money that we haven't paid?
I believe it's sixty, sixty thousand.
I think it was seventy, but, okay, yeah. And, and that's why we gave Grouselin twenty-five now and twenty-five next year. We're trying to stretch out the money so that we can give everybody a little something, and sometimes that's difficult to give away free money.
Mr. Dawson, if you ever need forms, please contact me. I'll get them for you.
Thank you. It's not free money.
I appreciate you bringing this to us.
I think I already said, to sum it up, the general complaint was, you sever. I had to get six quotes, five quotes. Some people only had to get one. I had to look.
Contractors, one, the city hire was acceptable, but not for me.
And I'm not picking on you, but that was because they had to have qualifications, because it was a historic site, right? That, not anybody in Vincennes could do work on historic, or historic.
No, that's understandable.
So that's why, it may have been out of town, but that's why they were used.
Ours is historic too, though.
It, it's.
But we, because of our grant, we had to have somebody that was qualified by the state to do this work. So that's why they ended up doing work for the city.
And, and I'd like to say there was more transparency tonight and explanation than there has been in a year and a half. Uh, I really hope that the U E A would consider letting the people presenting stay to listen to further discussion instead of leaving. Um, that really just rubs people the wrong way, um, in my experiences.
Is, so let me ask that question. Is that done in, in, I guess it's done with the media and other people? Just the, it's done in an executive session?
I don't know, media, I don't know. We leave and media stays.
Yeah, media will stay.
It's not executive session. It, it's open. We just ask people to leave so we can discuss it. They can present their case, and when everybody leaves, then we start back at the top of the list of people who have asked for money, and we work down the line and decide what we can give them.
Okay.
And sometimes, to be honest with you, we're looking in the checkbook, and we're looking at our outstandings, and we're looking at what it, you know, there's only one paid member, and that's Dan. So we have to make sure we have enough money back to pay him, and sometimes, well, I've seen our balance get pretty low. So sometimes that comes into play, and if somebody comes at the wrong time, well, Grouselin came a long time ago, and we just said, we're gonna have to put you off. We don't have any money right now, and we did. Now, not that we didn't fund some little things in between time, but we had to put them off if we were gonna give them an award that was meaningful for the size of their project.
But they weren't required to do any of the other requirements, though?
Well, they, they have, they had their own estimates. They told us what they were gonna spend, and they already had their people hired. It, it wasn't any of that.
Well, I already had a contractor hired too, though. I mean, they were doing interior work, so yet the standards aren't the same still.
Did you say that, though?
Yeah, we told you, we had them hired for interior work.
I, I, I don't remember it.
And I guess I have some more confusion now of if they don't base it off a percentage officially, then why was I asked to get a re-quote for a lower amount? Why did I have to go back to one of my contractors and say, bring your quote down? They asked you to come down on it.
Who, who told you that?
Well, Dan makes all the phone calls, and he's the messenger, but like I said, because we, we have to leave the meeting, so it's all relayed. And that's why I re-quote, it's why I called him. I didn't do it because I wanted to make that conversation with the contractor, say, hey, I think you're trying to screw us over. Can you bring, come down lower? Because that's how it really sounds, and it's, it's not a conversation you want to have with somebody.
Do, do you recall that conversation?
I do. Someone on the board asked me to call him back and ask for a different quote.
So I, I'm just confused, because I could have came in with a two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar quote. But mine was floating around a hundred, and then I was asked to come down off of it. I was just super confused by the whole process, and there was zero transparency and, and no rules. I mean, it's, there, there's just, that was my personal experience. I, I assume there's others that maybe just give up and don't, don't keep going to the meetings, or ask for, uh, a meeting with the, the council here to express my concerns. But that's kind of where I stand. Um, may have made some people mad tonight. I don't know.
No, you brought a concern. That's what you're supposed to do. Um, there's a lot to process, obviously. There's ways that we can make the process better. I mean, in the end, that's what we're here for, is to make the process better um in all areas of government, and this is one of the areas that we can look at, so.
Honestly, Brett, we may all disagree on how to get there, but we all want to make our community better.
Right.
I mean, none of us are here to, to make it worse.
And, and like I said, it wasn't always just about the money. It was the, the playing field. It wa- it wasn't even, and you don't, you know, one set of requirements for this person, but this other person just may have got another set of requirements.
And I.
And it was all documented, and.
I mean, I don't speak for the council as a whole, but like I, I, I would hope that one of the things that we see moving forward is some standard of rules, especially before the time we get to that, um, extension. Um, just to make it easier for citizens, easier to understand, not just for you applying, but for the board itself. So there isn't confusion. We don't want, you know, the people that are involved in this thing want a better community, not just the people here, but the people on those boards. And with a set of standards, it's going to allow them to be able to easily explain decisions. This is why this happened. This is why we made the decision. This is why you got this amount. and you're not gonna run into these problems, and I think that's a route that we do need to go. Um, and we've got one of the best that does work at it for us, and we're very thankful that he's here for us, and I do appreciate, you did say that he, he's done a great job, and it's always nice to hear when, um, the people that we have serving on those boards are the ones that you've had good experiences with, so, um, John, Dan.
I actually, and on to the resident thing, I actually like that program because.
That was a great program.
Well, in a sense, these homes that sit within the UEA, a lot of times don't have the equity in those homes to be able to take out money and do those projects like that. They may have a mortgage or something like that, but they don't necessarily have the equity to do that, this program allows them to have a little bit of extra funds to be able to work on their homes, so that, that's a pretty cool program, I didn't fully know that program, that's Upgrade Vincennes, and that one other, another part of that program, Jim?
It is.
That is, is that the entire program?
That is the entire program.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
And, and my only complaint about it is that we have no funds coming back.
Right.
We're giving it all away, and that is causing us to make smaller awards to businesses.
Right.
Understood.
But, you know, it's all tax money, you can argue that fact, it is all tax money that people pay in. So, whether they work at your business or they own a business, I, I'm just trying to look at the mission.
Sure.
We will work towards a resolution.
Okay, thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Next is Resolution Two, twenty twenty-one, Resolution, the Common Council of the City of Vincennes, Indiana, authorized approval of a full-time position for Secretary, appointment to the Vincennes Police Department.
Uh, make a motion to read and approve Resolution Two, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salters, sent by Vice President Grove, to read and approve Resolution Two, twenty twenty-one.
Wake up, Dave.
Can I always, I was enthralled.
Oh.
Do I have it here? I don't know what that is.
Chief, do you got it, you might need to get it to him.
Thank you, Chief. Even though you're wearing a hurricane shirt.
Thank you. It's changing the weather by the way, sir.
Okay.
I got a new shoulder, guys, could we? Resolution number one, twenty twenty-one, Resolution, Board of Works of the City of Vincennes, authority.
Resolution two.
This is a council resolution. Oh, he gave me the one that said one. I don't have.
John.
It's your first resolution. Okay, so that's, that's, yeah, we got it figured out.
This, this work good at Board of Works, that's all I gotta say.
It was good enough for the.
Resolution Two, twenty twenty-one, Resolution of the Vincennes Common Council of the City of Vincennes, for the approval of a full-time position for Secretary to the Vincennes Police Department, omitting formal parts, Section One, uh, deletes a part-time secretary, Section Two adds, uh, a full-time secretary to assist the police department in the wonderful, outstanding, and completely transparent work that they do. Right. And.
I was off script there, sorry.
I, just for discussion, this position, we were changing from, uh, part-time to full-time, and part of it is because with the new cameras that they all wear, downloading and that, keeping track of all that, keeps it in the data, but plus, um, when a dispatcher's off, this person can fill in, which is purpose, that way they don't have to take an officer off the streets, they can carry dispatching, so that's the whole purpose behind this.
Good, good, good. All right, no other questions?
Anybody got any questions, or?
Comfort question.
Comfort question.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by vote of seven to zero, Resolution Two, twenty twenty-one passes, now we'll go back to.
Maybe the quality of life. All right, uh, so we'll kinda set this up the way that we do the for good of the order, it was the first May meeting that I asked you to kinda look into things specifically your district, or things that you heard from the community, now, the key thing that we remember, this is a discussion, this is for ideas, does this mean that we're gonna be able to do all these things? Of course not. But it gives us an idea of things possibly that we could shoot for, uh, whether we can get the community, uh, excited, or thinking about certain things going that way, I can think of, you know, things as simple as, you know, you had a group of people that got excited about the pickleball courts and took off and ran, right? But it does give us something to kinda shoot for, uh, we do have kind of these brainstorming sessions with all kinds of things, whether it be certain areas of town, uh, development areas, I know, it would've been years ago, we had a big hundred-and-fifty-page thing on Main Street where it had all different kinds of ideas, where it kinda gives you something to look forward to, all right? Um, we've got a ton of things that we already offer, what, what are we gonna be able to do to continue all aspects, whether it be from the youngest person to the oldest, to the most active to somebody that's least active, to the pet lovers, the non-pet lovers, so we'll go around basically for the good of the order, things that you've talked about and discussed with the community, we can take notes as we go on. Um, and I will start off, um, in District One with Councilman Grove.
I always get started.
Well, I mean, it's number one, right?
Number one, best, best first, I guess, a couple of mine, uh, and I've, I've thought a lot, talked to a lot of people, uh, about this, I'll go with my, my kinda small ones first, um, alley parks on Main Street, uh, there's a couple alleyways that I'd love to see, uh, closed down, and we can put outdoor games, uh, cornhole, Connect Four, I've seen it done in Evansville, uh, really works well. Um, it would just, it, it needs some lighting, there's some other areas that, uh, uh, building was burned, and, and, uh, some areas that we could look at doing some just small, outdoor, fun things for kids, families to go do. Uh, those were my small things, um, my big one, and everybody knows, um, I, I love the Riverwalk, I, we've put a lot of money into it. Uh, I think, uh, that project really needs electricity down there, uh, there's a lot of festivals down there, uh, Latino festival's coming up, there's food trucks down there every Monday that's really loud with generators, um, and that can alleviate a lot of the noise, and make it a more, uh, entertaining place, uh, with the electricity on the Riverwalk. I know it's a big project and would take a lot of money, but I think it would be a wise investment.
All right.
Say anything to any of these?
Yeah.
Because I'm happy to say that, uh, Caitlin Ashby has already approached me about the alley next to her building and doing something like you just said, and.
Good.
I'm working on it.
So. I'm taking notes inside, yeah, well, you wanna jump, jump in on any of these, feel free to, all right? All right, District Two.
Uh, one of my biggies, uh, I hear this, heard this during campaign, and, and just going to the park, but a larger shelter, larger shelter house at Chicago Park, because compared to the others, uh, it's a, it is one of the smaller ones, uh, it was, it was great a couple, about a year and a half ago, a group came in, uh, just put together a committee and painted that, and, uh, the paint was furnished, but they, this, when I've been at that park, they're just, and when that one shelter house is being used, well, then that doesn't leave, that leaves no, uh, covered shelter for other folks after they wanna have, and that, that show, and that park is used a lot, um, along that same line, and I know this probably involves paving when, when there's, when there's repaving of streets, but the handicap ra- ramps in the north end are not, uh, as, as opposed to other parts of the city, uh, you don't see, there's not as many, but I go, I guess when, not I guess, when there's paving, then you have to put in the ramps, is that?
Yes, one of every three dollars for paving goes towards ADA compliant ramps.
It's.
Okay. Um, also enhanced lighting in that northern district, and, uh, and I know that, and, and on the, you know, we talk about trees a lot, and beautifying our city with trees and the, the shade and things, but along that Sixth Street corridor between College Avenue and St. Clair, and I know a lot of the, a lot of that's owned by the railroad, so I don't know if that's working in cooperation with them, but there's just not a lot of trees in that, that stretch of corridor along Sixth Street that just, uh, makes it almost look like an industrial site instead of.
Right.
Um, uh, enhanced area.
And you are correct, it's railroad property.
Yeah.
And I don't know that they're gonna plant trees or let us plant trees, but we can check one.
Our best friends.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Love the railroad. All right, District Three, Councilman Stangle.
Thank you, um, I have two items that I'd like to see, um, the first one is, be a large item, it's a, uh, citywide internet. We haven't, um, discovered how important the internet was until the last year and a half, uh, with our students, uh, needing to be learning. I, I deal with about a hundred-and-twenty students from kindergarten up to seniors every year, and, um, when we had scheduled e-learning days, so many of those students was worried because they didn't have internet, and they would have to go to a friend's house or family members, and, um, you know, i- if we had a citywide internet, they wouldn't have to do that, they could stay home and, uh, and do their work. Uh, also, you know, people work from home, um, as council worked from home during the shutdown, uh, people look for jobs and homes, it, it's just became really important to our lives anymore, and so many people, so many homes in this town doesn't have internet, um, you know, with the citywide internet, I think it can improve their lives. Um, also, the second item I'd like to see is sidewalks on Emerson and Niblack Avenue, or Road, um, between Maple Park and Willma- uh, Will Street. And, uh, you, you drive up those roads, you'll see people walking down those roads all the time, crossing Will Street, um, they're carrying babies, with baby toddlers, you know, holding their hands, walking down the road, you kinda have to kinda work around them real slow so you don't hit them. Um, but that's Niblack and Emerson both, uh, lo- those are large apartment complexes out there, um, there's a lot of people live out in that area, and a lot of them don't have, uh, any modes of transportation other than walking, and, um, I just think it's kinda dangerous, you know, with them not having sidewalks to walk, walk upon, um, and go a little further, I'd even like to see a it probably wouldn't be a very popular idea among people that use Will Street, but, uh, I'd like to see a street light out there, um, you know, so those people can actually cross Will Street a little bit, a little bit safer, um, haven't had any bad accidents out there, uh, for a while, or that's, I remember, but you know, I, I think it could happen, so that's all I have.
All right, Councilman Ravellette, District Four.
Just a couple items, um, I know everybody enjoys and takes advantage of the, um, large item collections twice a year, because there's always big lines out there on Saturday mornings. I would like to see if that could be, uh, enlarged to quarterly. That way people would maybe be able to get rid of their large items out of their, uh, areas sooner, and make a cleaner-looking city.
Definitely.
And also, oh, I've just been made aware of what they call the Intersection Conflict Warning System. It's a system where, well, Tara Holt, I think, is, is working with this now, where on the main road, for example, Main Street, uh, and then, then there are two side streets coming in, these systems would warn the people on Main Street going either direction that there are cars on each side of the road, s- ready to come in. Give them some advance warnings as a heads-up, that cars on the side streets may come out into your area. So, that's it.
Yeah, you're doing this homework over there.
That's right, thank you.
That's it, what was it called, Intersection Conflict Warning?
Intersection Conflict Warning System.
Yeah, I'm definitely looking it up.
ICWS.
I just wanna, I just wanna see it now, all right, uh, Councilman La, District Five, my friend.
All right, um, in that area, I mean, uh, touch just a little bit in regards to, uh, walkways, especially, um, I, I guess when I think about quality of life, I always think about well-lit, well-lit roads and walkways that you can walk down, you can get through, you can manipulate, you know, you can, you can get to where you want to go, and and like you were saying, that there's, there are places in the city that we, that just don't have a few, that, that need a few, and I, and I completely agree. Um, along with that, I, I think, at least for me, and, uh, what I look at, when I look at, uh, coming into a community, is I, I definitely look at the, the park system, I look at recreation, because it's a big part of what we do, it's a big part of where everybody goes, they, you know, you wanna go someplace, well, let's go down to the park and eat, let's go at lunch, let's go to the park, let's, uh, let's go play basketball, let's go to the park. Um, so when I, when I look at that, I look at, you know, quality of life, I, I say, where do we, where should we put additional funds? Uh, I always say, you know, it's a great place to put it, uh, especially into maintenance, where we can relandscapes some of those, uh, work on uh, additional grants and funding for other things that are historic within those, those nature, within those parks themselves, um, pavilions and things like that, um, those parks are a great amenity, and, uh, we, we look at maintaining those, but try to maintain those at a, at a greater level, uh, so that as we, as we come down through there, they're, they're just more defined.
Thank you, all right, Councilman McNeese, did anyone steal any of yours first?
All of them, that's okay, they're, they're, nothing earth-shaking here, we, let's, let's just start at the parks first, and, and they are, Ryan i- has talked about it, they are our most-used item that we have in this community, I mean, people are there all the time, either walking or something. But basketball courts, we, we just really don't have one that you can play basketball on, and basketball is a, is a cheap sport for, for kids to play. All's you need's a ball, uh, but right now, uh, the basketball courts we have right now are just really, they're almost unplayable. Uh, tennis courts, we don't have a public tennis court to go play on at this park, the skate park, we talk about that all the time, and, and, but it's not, it's there, it's fine, it could use some upgrading, heck, it could even use some paint, but these activities that I'm talking about right there are inexpensive for kids to do, and to, for adults to do. And then, uh, hopefully, our new Parks Director, whoever that will be, and I, I know that Mayor Joe has got some expectations for that person, would bring back some programming. Uh, there used to be yoga in the park, there used to be volleyball in the park, there used to be, uh, basketball games at, at various places, those programming are pretty important to the citizens of Vincennes too, they used those, and, and they were part of that, even concrete cornhole boards, you know, you talked about it there, but we could put those at one of the parks, and I think they would get used. Um, and the other thing, better, at Leicester Square, I've noticed lately, uh, T-ball teams playing at that, that little bitty, uh, you know, baseball field there, and it's not big kids, it's all the T-ball, but that's in pretty shabby shape. I, I think even some benches may be added there, something like that would, would improve the quality of life in, in, for those people that are at that, at that thing. And then, of course, sidewalks, walking paths, sidewalks are important, and I, John is absolutely right when he talks about Niblack Boulevard, I, I go, or Niblack Street, is that what it is?
It's this.
Yes, it's Niblack Street, it's not Boulevard.
Boulevard, yeah.
Yeah, Boulevard's the other one, that's Niblack Street.
Yes, right.
So when you go up that, I, and I go up it quite a bit, every Tuesday and Thursday to go drop my dog off and pour on the floor, um, there are people pushing strollers, walking up and down, carrying groceries up and down that road, and there's no safe place for them to jump off. I mean, it is up to the, the car person to make that, and that's how they get there, I mean, there's no other way to do it, I, I hadn't even thought about that. Um, you know, pie-in-the-sky things, uh, more trees on, more street trees, and I preached this before, but there's lots of studies that show that where you have street trees, traffic goes slower, um, because it, it, it just closes, it gives the appearance that it's closed in, and if we can figure out ways to design our streets to make them go slower, all the better for, uh, everybody around. Uh, and probably last on my list is, is something that I know we, it's gonna become more and more important to individuals as we increase where we want people to be, we want people to be downtown. We, we've built apartment complexes down there, Vincennes University's built their nice facility down there, there's more lofts, but we don't have any playground equipment in the downtown for kids, and I think that there would be a lot more moms and dads that would purchase food and, and go sit with their kid at the playground in the downtown area, and I, we have a couple identifiable areas, I think behind the old Tade Building, uh, is an outstanding spot, and then back to that, a dog park in the downtown too, and I know we have one at Hillcrest, we don't even go to it because it's, it's not necessarily bad, it's just kinda out of the way. And if you're walking your dog, it's kinda nice to let them off and run, and impromptu at Gimble Corner, when that was a fence and you could get in, uh, you'd be surprised how many people were actually using that, and it's a good way to design something for what people are using. You know, why do you put a sidewalk where the goat path is? Well, that's because people are using that path, you know, designed to the people that are around, and they're using. Why do you put a sidewalk where the goat path is? Well, that's because people are using that path, you know, designed to the people that are around and they're using that in the downtown. So those, those are my pie in the sky. I'd love to see a better baseball thing, like I said, at Lester Square Playground Downtown. And I know that's expensive, but I think that, um, I hope that we all, here's the other thing. I hope that we all keep an open mind to these quality of life issues. I don't care whose idea it is or where it comes from. If it's a good idea, I am all about supporting it and making our community a little better and, and making it a little easier too. So I, those are, those are some of them. That's it.
It was good.
Oh, uh, the last one.
Oh, you got another one?
No, I got a bad one. I got a, I got one that may, so trash pickup. And, um, I, it was at the bottom of the list, and I know you, you get in a lot of trouble for saying this, but in some way figuring out to get away from the stickers, uh, on our trash. And I think it makes our city cleaner as we've been out doing trash pickup every week. I think with, uh, without the sticker situation, our quality of life improves. I, I, I just think it does. It reduces the amount of vermin we have in our community too. Let's go, left rat, all that kind of stuff as well. So, I don't know.
Yeah, it was good. That was a good one to end on right there. Just had to throw that one in there, didn't you?
Beat you.
All right, uh, I got a lot of low hanging fruit thing that I think there is easy, easy to be able to do, but I think it'd be accessible. I know, um, we kind of hit like larger shelters at Chicago Park, but I like that small shelter. I like, I think it fits about maybe six to eight picnic tables possibly. And I think smaller shelters like that, that you could use throughout our park system, that then expands the availability of families to be able to go out there and use those things. Um, to kind of tie that in, I think more picnic tables is a must. Um, I think that we've got to have those out there. I know that a lot of ours are in, uh, some are in rough shape and it's understandable. They're out there, uh, they pa- handle the wear and tear. Uh, but to be able to have more picnic tables like that, mini shelters, um, I like, uh, we've always talked about shading and adding shading in certain areas. And there's some specific spots, um, obviously the Riverwalk is an area where you would like to see a little bit more shade. It does, like this afternoon when I was helping Councilman Grove set up, gets a little warm, especially on days like that, just a, just a tad warm.
On that one real quick, it's a labby when we can't.
Right, right.
Plant trees on the labby.
But can you put, like the shading, the things that I'm thinking are a little bit like, well, we have a rainbow beach where we've got, we've got the ability to make those shade things. I've looked in those things for school. I think that we've got opportunities specifically around the splash pad area. Because if you've been out there, I mean, it's just direct sunlight. There is no way out of it. Um, and if you could find a way to shade specific areas at that, I think that would really help that area encourage more people to go out. Um, a- and I would really like to see, when you talk about Four Lakes, the amount of people that are out there right now that are enjoying the splash pad. Um, if we added a playset, and it doesn't even need to be back in that area where we've got the swings. If we added it back behind where the splash pad's at, so it encourages people to use that section, cause we're going to redo the tennis courts. I know that's on the, on the list to do. So now you're pushing people that direction instead of over there where the swings are. I think we've got a lot of opportunity right there because we've got our shelter that's already placed over there. Um, and we do have a lot of people that are going out there. We have a ton of people that are taking advantage of the splash pad, which is what we wanted. And we wanted to encourage that. Um, I, I think getting, and this might sound this silly, but more trash cans that are easily accessible that we can have access to, um, being able to do that, I, I mean, I think it's the Disney rule. I think it's like thirty feet. Um, that if you've got a trash can close by, people are going to use it and throw it away compared to if it's farther away, people aren't going to walk and be able to do that. Um, that's a problem that we had early on in our sporting facilities that we really had to like almost double or triple to be able to get what we needed to be able to help our janitors clean up messes. So I'm, and obviously the one that I'm really knowledgeable about is in midfield after a football game. But we had to do, make little changes like that. Um, water fountains. I know this sounds silly, but easier access to water fountains and not just water fountains for humans, but water fountains for pets. If you go to Greg Park right now, I guarantee you there's probably, you know, maybe a dozen people with their pets out there. Um, and people do walk their dogs throughout, throughout town. They do have, and you know, this is kind of just looking at, they do have those fountains set up where you just hit a little pedal on the bottom and it sets up and your dog can get down there and just lap it up. Or if you walk your cat, I, you can help your cat do that. Some people do that. My dog doesn't make it very far. She makes it a block and then stops walking and then I have to carry a fifty pound bulldog home. Um, one of the areas I'd like to see built up, I think we got a real opportunity over here at Fireman's Park. I think there's just something, there's something there. I don't know what it is yet, but I, I always keep looking at, I think there's something that we can do there. Uh, the key thing is constantly building up the downtown area. It's not just, we don't just focus on that, but you look at opportunities and areas. And I think there's something that we can do there. Um, I don't know what it is yet, but I, I know that every time I drive past it, I look at it, I'm like.
Have a Fireman's Park. I think it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you're thinking outside the box on that thing. You get some kind of playset set up that's like, you know, fire themed or something like that. I don't care. Um, but.
Maybe that's where the fire ground play put it.
Yeah. Uh, so those are, the, I, those are the couple of things that I've been thinking about and discussing with people as, as we, uh, kind of go about. And I, I do, I mean, there's a lot of great ideas right now that, I mean, there's a lot of great things.
And I'll say a lot of this has to do with the parks and you'll all be happy to know that I just met with Michelle Carrico Friday about grant dollars for the parks. That we look at a lot of these things. So, uh, and Michelle's with SID CD. We worked with a lot, uh, so. And as far as Main Street, we just applied for a two million dollar historic Main Street grant. Cheryl and Ellen have worked on through Oak Ridge, uh, so. So hopefully we've been applied for some grant dollars and.
You've got a lot of, a lot of good ideas.
Yeah. They're all good ideas.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good work everyone.
I still got a good presentation.
Is that?
How about we make that our for good of the order tonight? I think that's, I think that's.
Thank you.
Second that, I think that, I think that's really good.
Mayor's not done.
Yeah, but the mayor, hey, mayor's got his stuff.
Okay.
Uh, I just re- just, uh, obtained the last signature we needed for the annexation for the property out off of Bruceville Road. So that should be on the next council meeting.
Is that just an approval by us?
Um, there was a, there.
Tate with a serious chuckle on that one.
Oh, I was, it was fingers crossed. I don't know if it was something really simple.
Yes, Smithers, it's just.
There's a process we'll go through, but it shouldn't be painful. Uh, next thing is the Safe Harbor Garden. I don't know if any of you are aware of that. That is a new park, a park.
Yep, really cool. Really cool.
Eighth and Scott. And I'm happy to say that the Fourth of July, uh, we've got fifty entries. We've exceeded our fifteen thousand dollar goal for the fireworks. So, uh, I appreciate all the businesses and the individuals that have donated for that because they're the ones that's making this possible for the fireworks. And Fireman's Park, I've met with Jandrowskis. They have their artwork ready to, looking at, putting around several of it on the used property. But one of the pieces on Gold Fireman's Park.
That's awesome.
Uh, as well as other places. So it was, it was good to meet with them and see what their plans are. And that's all I have.
Awesome.
We'll move on to claims.
Oh, yeah.
I just make sure I get the amount right. All right, make a motion to pay claims in the amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I'll second.
Motion by President Salters sent by Vice President Grove to pay the claims in amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. Are there any questions on the claim?
No.
I got, I got cleaned up today. On that note, Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, claims are paid. Anything under Miss Alainas?
We just got council cleanup. We're meeting at, uh, Four Lakes Park and Councilman Ravellette's already got us all split up. He's a little bit more organized than we.
Hey, so then the other side of that, we actually had some individuals that were not part of the council come and show up and, and help the other day. Uh, that was fantastic. And if more people want to show up, we'll, we've got trash bags.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll put you to work.
Okay.
Okay.
Back to public comment. The public's pretty much.
No, no more?
We've done for good of the order, so, uh, we're just in a motion to adjourn.
Samberg.
Here we are, John.
Okay.
Hey, make sure you sign your stuff.
Yeah, what time are we done? Hold on.
Yeah, I am. She's so bad.
Oh, she is.
Yeah. Wait, that's what, that's what she said to me. What'd she said?
No, I was just, because I was.
Yep, I mean.
How busy was it?
Oh, my. You're gonna have a long night. It's a giant can of trash.
Food trucks?
No.
Uh, Brian does.
My wife is down there doing it right now.
She's down there.
What time's the food truck?
Eight.
Eight o'clock.
What'd you get for the food truck?
Nothing.
Nothing.
On my phone.